Welcome to the Oceanside City Council meeting for August 9, 2023. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order and ask that our city clerk call the roll.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Joyce.
Present.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. Tonight, we have Pastor Trace Martinez from the Pilar Church of Oceanside. Pastor Trace?
Thank you very much. Would you pray with me? Heavenly Father, I pause this evening to ask your special blessing upon this gathering. It takes great effort, coordination, and unity for a city to function well. So I ask that each leader here today be equipped with the strength and courage and compassion to set the city of Oceanside on a good path. I pray for a spirit of unity and protection over these proceedings. Grant each one wisdom and understanding as decisions are made. I thank you for this beautiful city, and may there be an outpouring of blessings upon its citizens. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. And tonight, we have something very special that we have kind of on a quarterly basis, is it? And tonight, we have the mayor's spotlight on business. And tonight, it is with BASE. BASE is being honored. That is Before and After School Enrichment Program. And Scott Ashton, our executive director for the Chamber of Commerce, is here with us, as well as representatives from BASE. Thank you so much. Let's give them a great big hand. And I'm going to go ahead and hand the mic to Scott.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Appreciate the opportunity to recognize our friends from BASE programs. And as the mayor noted, BASE stands for Before and After School Enrichment. Denise and Cory started this business back in 2008, and they have been serving our community ever since. They're currently serving about 1,200 students in the Oceanside Unified School District, and that's spread out over eight different elementary schools in the district. And they have a summer program going on, serving another 600 people, and another program that that will share. But from the chamber's perspective, we really appreciate the value of your service and what it provides for working parents, and also for the educational enrichment that you're providing for our local students, which are the next generation of our Oceanside workforce. So thank you for all you're doing there, and just want to give you a chance to say a few words.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for this award. We're not much of public speakers. We're usually busy with students. But we did, we started this program because we really believe in the transformative power of creative education, and we want to create these spaces for students to discover and learn and develop who they are, the uniqueness in this world. So we've been lucky enough to have a wonderful partnership with Oceanside Unified School District. We'll be extending to all 14 schools, leading a TK and Kinder-specific program, which is wonderful for us because we love the young, very curious and excited students. So we just definitely want to say thank you to Oceanside Unified. As I was thinking about it, Oceanside Unified and us, it's exactly a perfect partnership. They're in support of Oceanside theme of supporting entrepreneurs, dreamers, and hard-working citizens who believe in what works. So thank you so much. It's such an honor, and we hope to just do wonderful things for you all.
Wow, thank you so much. Thank you.
I'll let you get in the middle.
How about if you get in the middle?
Okay.
And then, yeah, here we go. Thank you, Scott. Thank you. Mr. Mullin?
Thank you. The council met in closed session at 3:30 to discuss one labor item, negotiations with the Oceanside Firefighters Association over a potential side letter of agreement. There's no reportable action under the Brown Act at this time.
Thank you. Onto consent calendar items, items three through 26. I understand that 13 is being polled. Going to go ahead and poll 14 for a very short comment. Any other requests to poll?
No, just 13 from the public.
There's a motion to approve?
I want to poll seven, 17, and 19.
Seven?
Uh-huh.
Seventeen?
Uh-huh.
And 19.
Yes, ma'am.
Darn, short. I thought it was going to be a short agenda, but anyway. So there's a motion to approve the balance. Is there a second by Councilmember Joyce?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number seven is approval of a change order six with TC Construction Company in the amount of $410,306 for a total contract amount of $11,467,181 for the Oceanside Boulevard Sewer Lift Station relocation project, appropriation of funds in the amount of $500,000 from the sewer fixed asset replacement fund unrestricted fund balance, and authorization for the city engineer to execute the change order.
Thank you. I pulled this, and I've already talked to staff, but I'm glad they came down because they know what I'm going to ask. We get a lot of emails, a lot of concerns and complaints about this project taking so long. Maybe I appreciate you coming down. Just can you explain to everybody why these changed process? What's happened with this project, and maybe if we have a completion date in the near future? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robinson. With regard to the Ocean Boulevard Lift Station, the reason that it's been taking quite a bit of time is that the soil conditions are different than what was identified during the design, and that required a significant amount of redesign and how we should address the soil condition that we encountered when we were putting in the pipeline that will send sewer to the new lift station. So that's taken considerable amount of time. We have one more step where we're going to be raising a portion of the pipe that's settled, and we'll be looking to do final paving approximately September or October, and then completion of the entire project before the end of the year.
Thank you. And I think that includes some early roadwork that'll be done because we do get a lot of questions about Oceanside Boulevard.
Correct. We recently did micro milling this past Sunday, and that smoothed out a lot of like the unevenness that occurred during a lot of the construction as a result of the soil conditions we experienced.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll move approval.
Okay, I'll go ahead and second that. No other comments? Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 13, that is approval of Amendment One to the Professional Services Agreement with KTUNA in the amount of $577,763 for a total compensation not to exceed $1,010,118 to complete a project study report, restroom design services, cafe design services, two public workshops, and park design services for the Buccaneer Beach Park Facilities Project, and authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment upon receipt of all necessary documents. Colleen?
Good evening, Mayor and council. First off, I'd like to tell you, my name's Colleen Bulch, and I'm representing tonight the Save South O organization and the Community and Merchants Association from South O. And the reason that we're here tonight is not to have any complaints about the project. We actually support the project in full. However, this was the first time we've had an opportunity to discuss the La Salina Waste Treatment Plant being decommissioned. And our group since 2019 has been soliciting city council members, staff, and anybody that will listen, that that piece of property should be changed to an additional portion of Buccaneer Park when it's decommissioned. Our LCP says that it should stay for public use, and that is the perfect opportunity for us to have more parkland. We're increasing density every day, and South O is very, very short on parkland. So that is the main reason I came tonight, and then I have a couple of other comments. The same groups have been asking staff since 2019 to provide a map showing how all the different projects fit together around Buccaneer. We have yet to see that, and we would hope that that happens in the very near future. And then the cafe. Although we all love the cafe, we don't see any reason to increase the footprint of it. And since the bathrooms are going to be removed, basically, and put into a different location, we're not seeing a necessity to have additional bathroom there unless it's required by some form of code person. To my knowledge, it's not required. That doesn't mean I'm exactly right. I've done a little bit of research, but maybe just enough to be dangerous. The other thing is, is that this item, just oddly enough, at the last South O meeting, was brought up, and the entire area wants to have an update on all the things I just mentioned. So our next meeting is in September, so I'm hoping that staff will be able to put some of those things together for us, and that Jonathan would be able to come and give us a presentation. And I wanted to thank you all very much, and I hope all these items can be accomplished and that can always have open dialogue and public participation. Thank you very much.
Sounds like an invitation. Mr. Parego?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Actually, I believe Colleen may have been referring to Jonathan Smith, who's our consultant on the project, but I'm sure either one of us would be happy to go there. And I'll let Jonathan address the question in regards to the park design. With regards to Ms. Bulch's other request regarding the map that depicts how everything fits together, we'd be happy to get working on that in time for their next meeting. With regards to the future of La Salina, of course, that remains an issue that we will need to get direction from council on at a future date, but no decisions have been made at this point. And I'll let Mr. Smith speak to the issue of the expansion of the restaurant building.
Before he does start that, do you have an approximate date when the council would be looking at the La Salina Treatment Plant? In a year or more?
At this point, we don't. It's my recollection that we would be looking at that around the time as we get, we are closer to identifying a closure date of the facility, and we're not there yet.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. The Other Jonathan?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight regarding this item. Our consultant has informed us that health department requirements require a staff restroom there that's accessible to the working staff in the restaurant. The square footage that we're adding is about an additional 80 square feet to accommodate a dishwasher, to accommodate enough space for the equipment that's necessary for the cafe to function. Available to answer any other questions that you or council may have.
Thank you. So the cafe snack shop, that is not going to be enlarged in any way other than to accommodate this requirement under health and safety?
That's correct.
Okay. And so I understand that you will be attending the September meeting of the South O Merchants and Community?
Yes.
Group at, what was it? The Moose Lodge?
Yeah. Yeah, I've attended a few in the past, and I'm looking forward to attending this one. It's perfect timing for what is happening with the project.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
Thank you. Move approval? Is there a second? There's a motion, a second? Please vote.
My display is not working, but the motion passes. Oh, there it goes. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 14 is approval of Amendment One to the Professional Services Agreement with Answer Advisory Management LLC in the amount of $913,600 for a revised contract amount not to exceed $958,600 for fiber management permitting, plan review, and inspection services, revision of the cost proposal in Exhibit A of the original agreement, appropriation of $913,600, authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment. And it sounded like a big discrepancy between something like $50,000 and $900,000. So, Mr. Parego, are these city funds that we are discussing?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, the short answer is no. As you may recall, when we entered into our fiber optic agreement with Sci-Fi back in 2022, the city council approved that agreement. And as you may recall, that agreement and that contract will actually result in the installation of fiber along every city street at no cost to the city. This cost, or this agreement before you today, is actually essentially a pass-through. We are hiring consultants to review their plans for the system and the construction once it starts, but those costs are actually passed on directly and covered by the telecom company. Actually, there's two now. Since you last approved this, there's actually another company who's going to be doing something similar as well, and that company's name is Ubiquity. But again, answer your question, oh, these are just pass-through costs, and they will be collected from the telecom companies ultimately.
Right. I couldn't find the "at no cost to the city" language in the staff report.
Yeah, it could have been more clear.
So that's why I went ahead and pulled it, "no cost to the city." All right. I move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion, a second? Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Item number 17 is approval of a professional services agreement with Infrastructure Management Services in an amount not to exceed $207,648 to update the city's pavement management program and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. And the items I'm pulling kind of have a similar theme. I think these are things that we get a lot of concern and complain about, our road conditions and stuff. And I just ask that maybe a brief explanation on what the pavement management program is, does, and how that's going to help us get our roads under control a little bit.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city councilmembers. Brian Thomas, I'm the city engineer. On the display is our work to date that we have completed with our pavement management system. In short, the pavement management system is a scientific analysis of our current condition of our roadways. Last time we had this done was in 2016, and it gives us an idea of what condition our roadways is in, and it helps us define what areas we should really be looking to concentrate the limited funds we have every year to rehabilitate or to maintain our roadways. Prior to my start in 2018, we had an approach where we would go out and address most of the most egregiously damaged streets to deal with. When I started, we shifted the whole program to deal with every district, divvy up and provide street repairs and maintenance in each district. So since 2015, we've completed about 55% of the city at this point. With the update of the pavement management system, we're looking to, one, make sure that the direction we're going with the outdated software and outdated information is still correct, and to, two, to give us an idea of where we really need to go and refocus it. So this is kind of a master plan for us, and every five years, we want to take a look at that.
Thank you.
Move approval?
There's a motion and a second? Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Last item to be called is item number 19. That's approval of a one-year public works agreement with Rancho de Oro Landscape and Maintenance, Inc., for citywide weed abatement and landscape maintenance services for city-owned properties for a total compensation not to exceed $50,000, commencing on August 9, 2023, and terminating on June 30, 2024, and authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement upon receipt of supporting documents. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. And I'll make a brief comment, and then if staff wants to add in, they're more than welcome to. The reason I pulled this is this is another one that, at least in District 2, been working with staff on, and I think throughout the city. We've had a lot of complaints about the condition of our roadside look, the shrubbery, the overgrowth of weeds, the medians, the weed control and the medians. And I know this, we're going to get another report later on the whole landscape maintenance districts, and this kind of deals with our city-owned responsibilities, I understand it. But I just want people to know that we are working on it, that staff, and I invite them to comment on anything they want to add to this. But one of the things that I've noticed is, and I think this happened before I was on council, it was about what chemicals and things we could use for weed control. And I just don't think it's being effective, what we're doing, and I think we might need to look at it, go back and see if there's a better way to do some of these things. And that would be, obviously, at a later council meeting or with more discussion. But I just open it to staff if they want to add any comments or anything about what you're doing.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. Vicky Gutierrez, real estate manager in the Public Works Department. So this item before you is related to city-owned properties, more like parcels. Our department doesn't oversee medians and parkways, so I'm going to find to Nathan Mertz, who can answer that better. And we do not, and it's within the public city parcels that we maintain, we don't use any chemicals right now.
Okay.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Robinson. Speaking to the Integrated Pest Management Policy or Program that the city adopted back in 2020 prohibits use of certain chemical pesticides in certain areas of the city, primarily focused on where people congregate and gather. You know, the spirit and intent of the IPM was focused on the parks in the city and kind of creeped out into parkways and other areas that the city is responsible for maintaining. And to this date, we've, and then there's also certain components that we can use chemical pesticides in or certain circumstances or situations that we can use chemical pesticides. And pesticides is a kind of a blanket statement of items that would take care of a certain type of pest. In this case, we're talking about weeds, so we'd be using herbicides to address that pest, which is weeds. And we can do so to protect health and safety issues, or economic loss, or to protect natural plant communities or native plant communities. And when we adopted that, the contractors that we had been in business with doing the work weren't used to not using Roundup or other chemicals. And over the last few years, we've hired new contractors and done a lot of research on how to address these pests using the tenants of the Integrated Pest Management Program. And we have found some organic or chemicals that meet the IPM requirements and are actively using those in situations that call for it. And for the public that may be watching or listening now, just want them to understand that not all the medians and parkways within the city are maintained by the city. A lot of these parkways and medians are maintained by businesses or adjacent residential developments or an HOA. So the city maintains medians and parkways right now. We just hired a new contractor. They're just a couple of months into it. They're making tremendous progress compared to what we had done before, and we are utilizing all materials at our disposal to address those conditions.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I think it's really just to let the public know, we are aware of some of these issues, and we're working on them to get those areas under control.
Thank you.
So thank you, and I'll move approval of this item.
Thank you. I do have a question, a follow-up question, since we are on the topic of weed abatement and coming off of a very heavy rainy season that we had, and we're seeing a lot of weeds and really tall ones. I mean, the ones in my backyard, I couldn't believe how tall they grew. And so I'm wondering, do we have a plan for where we can't contact owners to, you know, give them a warning that they need to cut this down because of the fire season coming up? See what's happening in Hawaii? So do we have a plan? Is this something, I know this is not the city-owned properties, but do we have a plan for, you know, getting property owners to address these health and safety concerns?
Honorable Mary, yes, I believe from contained areas, working with code enforcement, we, you know, will write letters to individual property owners, and I believe the fire department also takes an active role in large areas that may have, you know, growth in writing those property owners' letters as well to, you know, mitigate that potential hazard. So I believe there is a plan, yes.
Did we increase the budget for this, for this particular year due to the higher occasion of having so much dry brush weeds?
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, to my knowledge, no, but I've not been approached by a department representative suggesting they need more funding either, so they may have enough to take care of it.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. I know that's another kind of call that we get, is people's concerns about a lot of dry brush near their homes and wanting to know how is the city addressing this and sharing their concerns about the potential for fire. So thank you very much. And there was a second? Yes? I'll second the motion, so please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. I'm going to move on item number 31. It's under mayor and/or council member items. I'm going to ask that we move forward with the request by me to make appointments to or motions for removal from some or all of the city's advisory groups. I move approval.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Councilmember Weiss?
I have a concern about the Economic Development Commission.
Oh, thank you very much for reminding me.
That is going to require a change in the bylaws. My recommendation is that we refer that matter back to staff and take it to the commission, since they have not had an opportunity to weigh in on the type of structure change they would like to see, because it may be more than just one position. So I would ask that we send that back to staff and to the commission and have a recommendation from the commission come back to us.
Thank you, Councilmember Weiss. Councilmember Weiss is referring to a position that I am asking to be changed from manufacturing and distribution to another retail and restaurant. We happen to have three manufacturing and distribution positions. We have one filled. The other two have been, we've had a very difficult time filling those because we don't seem to be able to get applications for them. And certainly, over time, we've had more restaurants in Oceanside. With respect to retail and restaurant, there's only one position that is for that purpose. So we've got manufacturing and distribution right now, three. Maricosta Rep, one. Tourism, one. At-Large, three. Banking and Finance, one. And Commercial Real Estate, one. So it was going to be my motion to change the, one of the manufacturing and distribution positions to retail and restaurant so that we can appoint someone to that position. That is, again, two of them have been vacant for, I don't know, maybe a couple of years, I think. So is that something that we can do, Mr. Mullin, today?
It's really in the discretion of the council. You could do it and then direct us to bring back the amendment, or you could defer, as Mr. Councilmember Weiss has requested. So if you were to move forward, though, I would recommend you bring the bylaw change forward so that the composition's consistent with the bylaws.
Okay. Okay, so I would, I guess my motion would be to move that forward and ask that the bylaw come back to us, so that it would be consistent. Is there a second to that?
Yeah, a second.
Okay. There's a second, and councilmember Robinson?
So I know we spoke about some of these names, and something came up, I kept thinking about it after the last couple of days, and I have a question for the clerk.
I've been on vacation. Thank you. For the clerk, when you, when there's vacancies and you advertise for it, you put a date on there of when all the applications have to be in, is that correct?
That is correct.
So there was a couple of names, and I don't know if they were both selected, but there were, in the mayor's list here, but there were a couple of applications that came to us late. Were those submitted after that date?
I believe they were. I know of one application that was submitted two days after our deadline that was published.
And I don't know if we have a hard and fast rule, and maybe it's something we have to ask the clerk to work on, but as I got thinking about it, I thought, we have a lot of people that, this book here is full of applications, and everybody got them in within the date and worked real hard, and then I just kind of see an unfairness in picking people for a commission spot that didn't get their application in time. I'm not against the people, per se, it's just the process. So I would, and I don't know if you picked both of those or one of those applicants. One was on the Utilities Commission, we talked about, I think Ms. Foster, and I don't remember the other one that came in late, I don't know if you know off the top of your head.
Not off the top of my head.
I should have looked it up, and I apologize. So that's kind of my issue. It's not about, it's just the process, and I really think there's people that you and I spoke about, that I would like to give them an opportunity to serve, and they did get their applications in on time.
So I could do that for the next time. I hope that we can move this forward. I could move forward, all except those two, and then come back, and then, of course, they'll still be on, they're on for a year, and bring back those names.
Well, I don't know why we would have to include them now, though. That's what I'm saying. Why couldn't we replace Colleen, for instance, because that was one of the applications that came in late?
Right.
With somebody else that I think was on my recommended list. I know Garrison Hamm was one that I did talk to you about, and I know you had some concerns, but from fairness perspective, the individual did get his applications in before the date.
So there is a motion and a second, so I'd like, oh, councilmember Keim.
Just actually, I know we, there is also, we have either City Ordinance or Code that the policy is that the mayor will coordinate with the county liaisons for each committee or commission, receive their recommendations, and then if the mayor chooses to go different, provide in writing the reason they're making a different selection. I'm not sure if that happened, it didn't happen with my liaison picks, but I'd like that to be followed before I move any appointments forward. And again, this has nothing to do with anybody on here, I just want to make sure we follow proper policy in putting people on commissions. So I can't support this at this time until we go through those. And just for the city clerk, is that, from what you understand, an accurate representation of that city policy or code?
Yeah, there's really no, nothing in our code or policy. It's actually policy number 100-10. It just, there's really nothing in there about deadlines or anything. I don't know if that's what you were...
No, this ordinance where, and I think it's, I don't have the obscure ordinance, I'll bring it next time, but it was specifically referring the mayor to coordinate with the council liaisons for each committee or commission, and then provide in writing why those recommendations from those liaisons weren't chosen. Okay, I think councilmember Robinson might have it.
Yeah, it's ordinance number 097-20.
Yeah, yeah.
And it, I can read it.
I just want to make sure we follow proper policy.
Okay, so there is a motion and a second. I'd like to go ahead and vote tonight, and if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. Councilmember Joyce?
I would just say to the deadlines, I mean, that would be something to clarify in the future, for sure, if that comes along with those procedures, but the deadline is when the appointments get made. I mean, that's really the deadline for applications, so we should, let's get it clear, because in past procedure, this is what, this has been open until the appointments are made. I am curious, do you have a copy of that ordinance that I could see? Because I have not heard anything about liaisons being included, and I've been on for a little while now, so if that's something that we're actually going to follow, then let's...
Follow it.
Well, let's not start tonight, when we have a full slate of people and a lot of business that happened in our commissions, we're going to start following stuff that we haven't followed ever before, tonight? I prefer we didn't.
Not in 23 years, for sure, I can say. And right now, we actually never voted on a deputy mayor, so we actually don't have a vote on a deputy mayor. So this is a carryover from last year, same thing happened last year, we never actually voted on a deputy mayor, so I actually haven't had the ability to work with a deputy mayor and been really doing this all on my own. So I don't know if that matters into the conversations here. But councilmember Robinson?
I would just say to my colleague, Mr. Joyce, we do have a, the clerk's responsible for putting it out, they put out a letter or memo, gives buy dates of when to have your application in, and I just think that's what people do, that's what they follow. And then if you can just go, oh, I'll send it in later, I don't know that that's fair, necessarily, to the people that follow the rules.
Councilmember Joyce?
My question would be, and I apologize to put you on the spot, is the deadline in place, so that you can have reasonable amount of time to process the applications?
The deadline's in place, so we could make...
Background check.
We have to do a background check on every applicant. So when a potential commissioner applies, we send that application to OPD. OPD does a background check on every single applicant, then we receive that background check back, and then we send the vacancy report to council and the mayor's office.
Okay. So were any of the proposals tonight, were they not able to get through the background check?
I believe everything that we've, we don't submit anything forward without the background check.
Of course, of course. Okay, so beyond that, it does say that if a liaison makes a, so this ordinance that I'm now seeing, if a liaison makes a suggestion, then the mayor can, shall state the reasons therefore in a written report. I would assume that that recommendation would need to become in writing, so that we could see that.
There was no recommendation, right, from...
Then I feel comfortable trying to get the business of our commissions done, so I'll stand by support.
All right. Councilmember Weiss? So I guess I did follow the rule, by the way.
No.
I would just like to say, if, I will be voting no, simply because of the Economic Development Commission action, but if this does not pass, I would like to have the opportunity for a motion.
Councilmember Robinson?
Mayor, I'm just going to kindly disagree with you. I did send you a memo, or an email, excuse me, on July 31st, with my recommendations for many of the commissions, but as the liaison to the Utilities Commission, I did give you who I wanted, who I suggested, and we did have a discussion about it and that, but that's what I'm saying. Then I began to ponder the application periods and time, and that's why I kind of disagree with it now. So I did, in fact, send you several names of who I suggested.
Right. Our conversation, we did have a conversation early, actually before councilmember Robinson, you were sworn in, you advised me, I asked you about the appointments, that it is the mayor that brings them forward, and they are confirmed by the council. You indicated that you understood it's a mayor's, only the mayor can bring forward names, and that you would be happy to support my names. At some time later, you gave me something that you wished me to strongly consider, and that was that you wished to make sure that anyone that wasn't an alternate would have the opportunity to serve as a regular. So I have been actually following that, because that was a very specific request of yours. Again, you indicated that you knew that it was only the mayor that can bring forward names. I did receive an email, councilmember Robinson, from you, a whole list of names, and I pretty much did maybe five or six and left, you know, wasn't able to do the other two. So pretty much, when we, I reached out to you, I indicated to you, well, I pretty much was able to do everything. Unfortunately, we had, I had had my own conversations with some of the applicants who had come, come forward and spoken with me, them understanding that it's only the mayor that can make the appointments. And so I had already indicated to people that, okay, you know, I would really like to see you on this commission, and so I'll be bringing forward your name. So it's unfortunate that, you know, it is what it is. Councilmember Joyce, what I'm saying here is, there, I have not had a whole lot of conversations with councilmember Keim, because, you know, there's been an animosity between the two of us. And having said that, you know, I think that we could still move forward in a professional way. He has at no time in the past asked me to consider a certain name for the boards and commissions, so, you know, there's nothing for me to do at this point.
I think we need to move forward to vote, that's not true.
Councilmember Joyce?
We've discussed that multiple times.
Councilmember Joyce?
Would you be, would you be willing to support if we amend the motion to include the adoption of the Economic Development appointees pending the changes to the bylaws?
Well, I'd like to see the, they may have other suggestions for their makeup, because in order to, so I'm willing to approve all of them, except for EDC and utilities, and work those things out for the next time.
Okay, so I will, I will take out Economic Development Commission and Utilities. So what we have left is the balance. Is there a motion for the balance?
I move approval.
Second.
All right, there's a motion for the balance. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Now we can go to items not on the agenda, comments from the public, and we will start with item number 29, advanced written request to reserve time to speak, and that is Ken Layton on developer business with the city.
Madam Mayor, councilman, Ken Layton speaking for myself. The other day, I drove down Coast Highway and saw a familiar sight, the Crackheads, not a good name for a business, if you ask me, but anyway, the Crackheads business has been there for over two years, just sitting there, piles of dirt, and there's these big metal storage bins, and it's like, this is right in the heart of our city, right on our major drag. Doesn't anybody pay attention to this? Why is this developer getting away with this? So then I started thinking about, hmm, I wonder what else developers are getting away with that maybe they shouldn't be getting away with. And then I started noticing about Howard Jacobs, about his Breeze project, right at the end of Deadmar Nevada Street, near Oceanside Boulevard. It's been, it's been going on since 2016, that's seven years. And it has had two changes, and it went from 34 townhouses to 146 boxes stacked on each other. I think it's like six stories or so. And councilmember Weiss even said that the new design is ugly and out of scale with the neighborhood. And yet, he still voted for it, and yet, the council still passed it. So that made me wonder about what it is with Howard Jacobs, what makes him so magic? And so he spoke a few weeks ago at the Downtown Advisory Commission, and he was there speaking about the Sunset, so-called Sunset Development at the top of Pierview Way and Horn, and he spoke, and he was asked by somebody on the DAC, so when do you think you'll get it done, Mr. Jacobs? He says, well, I don't know, it's, there's a lot of variables now, there's interest rates and blah, blah, blah. Okay, well, fine. And the fact of the matter is, I was told by many people after the fact that Mr. Jacobs is not even a developer. He's a packager, he puts things together, and then he sells these packages to a real developer, and yet, here's Mr. Jacobs holding himself as a developer, and I don't think that's, I don't know, man, it just doesn't seem, it doesn't smell, it doesn't pass the smelt. So then I called him up last week, and he immediately hung up on me twice, which, I guess that happens. And, but that begs the question, just how can he pull off this, I call it a scam, I guess it's up for discussion, how can he pull off this developer scam and get council people to vote for his high-density stacked box tenement, when even the council member himself who voted for it says it's crap? For the answer, let's go to the Howard Jacobs pay-to-play tote board. And that includes good old C. Rod, he got $15,000. Jack Feller, that's not right, it says $8,000.
It's crooked.
Much more than that. But then Mr. Keim, Robinson, and Weiss all got a nice, a nice chunk of change, and Corey Jensen got a nice $4,900. I don't know if that was a good investment, but anyway, so then, so for the records, Howard Jacobs is not a developer. He used a bait-and-switch plan with, which pissed off the staff, because he tried to use the same approval for 34 units, townhouses, or 146 stacked boxes, and he's been there for seven years, and this just, this has a bad aroma to it all the way around, and it clearly seems like there's a pay-to-play thing going on. And then, but look at the bottom of the chart, and you'll see the name Ashton Chamber of Commerce. He gave the Chamber of Commerce $2,000. What does that buy you? That gets the Chamber of Commerce to come and speak on your behalf, to come and give letters, not only for the Howard Jacobs projects, but also for North River Farms. The same thing happened with North River Farms, they were given $4,500. That winds up good old Scott Ashton, and he comes before you and says, I speak for the entire Chamber of Commerce. Please vote for all these wonderful projects that nobody even wants, or calls crap, or is voted down two to one, like NRF ones. And so I think this is, we sort of have a breakdown here, I'm sorry, I ran out of time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, to communications from the public regarding items not on the agenda and item number 30, how many speakers do we have?
We have eight speakers.
Okay, let's get started.
All right, our first speaker is Brian Paznik, to be followed by Jerry Sarnataro.
Hello, everybody. My name is Brian Paznik, thank you for letting me speak today. I want to first thank the city council and the members, Oceanside staff, and some of the neighbors here, and those watching online. Quick disclaimer before I get started, I'm representing a collective of homeowners on my street on Greenbrier Drive. They could not be here today, or could not speak, however, some of the opinions I share here are mine alone. In short, what I'm asking here today is the city landlord oversight, financial help for the tenant for increased height netting that is being proposed by the tenant. For background, my wife and myself moved into the location on May 2020. Our family was growing, and was actually really excited to live across the street from the golf course. We originally came to Oceanside in 2016 from Chicago, and knew nothing about the history of the course, or the Save the Goat efforts, or the current tenant. Only months after living in Greenbrier did we hear about these efforts that have been made to help. I was over there, quite frankly, with my kids, I love the staff, the community, and the way that the golf course is being renovated. In my own personal opinion, I feel like it's great for the community. While our house and car occasionally gets hit by the golf ball, I generally accept it. I live across the street from a golf course mentality, is my personal view. However, we were also not in the main... However, we were also not in the main problem street closer west to the tee box where some of my neighbors were getting the brunt of, of the golf balls. As you see here in some of the slides, there is, you know, 150-plus tall trees, these eucalyptus trees. To put in perspective, the smaller trees are around 10 feet high, that projected, protected the neighborhood as a natural net. This changed, however, in November 2021. At 2022, during windy day, a large branch fell off of the giant trees, and SDG and SDG&E came for the next four to six weeks and removed the entire north side of the eucalyptus trees. Doesn't take arborists to find out that trees don't grow like that, they removed the whole entire side. Then the next two or three weeks, the, the city removed the other side of the trees on the golf course, leaving it with just a bunch of sticks here. We didn't know this at the time, but this would be a butterfly effect on serious threats of these balls imposed on the safety and not just the neighborhoods, but everyone who walks and drives to this area. As mentioned, Greenbrier is an artery between Oceanside Boulevard and Mission. Anyone who travels by car, walks on foot, goes to school, goes to the grocery store, or whatever destination, they are now on path to serious danger by getting hit by line drives with a golf ball. I must note, there's no signage posted anywhere to beware of golf balls. As you see here in a lot of these pictures, these are all recent damage within the past year. Let me skip through some of this. There's altercations that are happening every week. We constantly have to go out there, confront the golfers, and the city, the police, and the tenant tell us that this is just a civil matter. Not only is this bad, but it's not the point I'm trying to make. These balls can seriously kill somebody. Four of my neighbors recently have been hit by golf balls. Let me just skip to the end. We need, we need better proposed netting, taller nets. What's being proposed right now is not going to work. There's telephone-sized nets that are being proposed, and we need the taller ones that are on the other side of the ground range. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask, okay, our city attorney, you've got his, you've got his attention. A lifetime membership to Goat Hill, no, not really. Jerry Sarantaro.
Thank you for letting me speak. I thought I was going to be speaking after our HOA president.
I thought so too, but.
Yeah. Our HOA president is here, he'll be addressing you about the issue, but I, I just want to say that the HOA is representing renters in Laguna Vista, which is 276 North El Camino, and there is an owner who has not yet fulfilled the requirements of the city, and he has been charging us his rent increase since July 1st and in the August 1st billing. So what our, our HOA president is going to ask in a few minutes, and which 500 people who live there are counting on, is that this council will support us and ask the owner or demand that the owner come into compliance with the law. We know he deserves the increase, the increase has been approved by the Mobile Home Commission. It's, it's not what we all wanted, but it's been approved. He's going to get it, and he should get it, but he has to comply with living up to what the city requires him to comply with, one of which is a landscaping issue, the other is which, another is another issue about lot definitions. But we are really grateful that you're, you're listening to our plea and hopeful that you will support us because we have been trying to do it alone, and it's just not working. So we thank you. 500 people that live there, thank you, and a bunch of taxpayers, thank.
Thank you, Mr. Sarantaro, and I'm going to go ahead and call Michael Forward, the president, Michael Mandig.
Good evening. I was hoping to be the last, but well. I am Michael Mandig. I live at space 28 at Laguna Vista Estates. It is a rent-controlled subdivision consisting of 272 units, eight lakes, a lot of what used to be really swell-looking landscaping that has deteriorated dramatically in the last year. And I came here with the idea of talking to you about two things. First of all, that this subdivision, that the park, the mobile home park, it does not consist of renters in the traditional sense of the word. The people that live there own the homes that are installed on the lots there. The homes themselves are, notwithstanding their name, not mobile at all. They have to be treated for all intents and purposes as permanently affixed. Many of them, including mine, have been there for 50 years. The prob, there are two problems that I wanted to speak with you about today, and I was going to be a little bit aggressive about it. There are two issues that, that we've been confronting particularly within the last several months. One is the, the lack of care of, of lakes and landscaping. We've got eight lakes, we've got four or five pumps that are missing, which, if they're not there, prevent the irrigation of all the landscaping, the park. We've been trying to get some idea of when those things are going to be installed, and, and the owner does not communicate with the residents. The second issue that brought me in here was that in April, the council, I've got one minute, I guess, right?
Yeah.
The council, pardon me, the Manufactured Housing Fair Practices Commission approved a 5.78% CPI increase in the rent, which is applicable to all the parks subject to rent control around here. What happened is, however, the, the owner has failed a couple of times to satisfy health and safety inspections, and notwithstanding that, is charging and continues to charge and collect that rent increase. I wanted to come in here and give the city staff a hard time, but at 7:30 this morning, I received an email from the Director of Housing Services that seems to suggest that they are going to take control of both of these issues, and I am hopeful that if that goes well, what will happen is, everything will be resolved. If that doesn't happen, I'm going to go 10 seconds over and tell you, we will be back.
All right.
We will be back in force with more board members, more residents, and so on.
Thank you.
Maybe as early as the next council meeting, but thank you.
Thank you very much. Penny Russell? Penelope?
Either one will. Honorable Mayor, Councilman, with the Manufactured Fair Practice Commission not meeting or being canceled for the last several months, I actually presented this information at Housing, and now to you. During our March 16th Laguna Vista NOI hearing, we spoke about Housing not including the with mortgage income figures for the low and very low-income residents in a table that was, that staff reported to Fair Practices. Housing stated that all rents were in compliance, but the personal declaration form being used at Laguna Vista then and now does not have a provision stating whether the resident has a mortgage or not. So the question I have for City Council or Housing is, how does the city know if all rents are in compliance for the residents with mortgages when the city isn't receiving information from the park owner as to who has a mortgage and who does not? And in 2021, the Housing Department applied and continues to do so area median family income instead of area median household income to calculate maximum allowable rents for Laguna Vista Estates. Now, the California Health and Safety Code 52102 and our regulatory agreement with the city specifically states that the formulas are to be adjusted for household size, and even in our regulatory agreement, it says, it shall be assumed that one person will occupy a single wide mobile home and two persons will occupy a multi-sectional mobile home. So the question I have is, why is Housing using family income instead of actual household income figures when it comes to calculating maximum rent levels? And the third point is that at our 21 NOI hearing, Housing used a much higher median family income level of $104,000 and change, and HCDs at the time had $95,100. So the 2021 HCD document, and you all have that in your packets, I gave you backup information on this, but it states that the area median family income is typically higher than area median household income because family households tend to have more people in their prime earning years, as contrasted with members who have lesser incomes because they are either very young or elderly, and Laguna Vista has that profile. We are a senior park with one or two elderly people retired living there. So the question is, why didn't Housing use HCDs AMI for our hearing? I want to just end with just a few other questions, which is, what, if any, consideration is being taken now for the acutely low and extremely low residents that now is part of HCD? And if this is happening in Laguna Vista, is it happening in other areas in Oceanside? And I also, how many spaces in Laguna Vista have mortgages? I'd like these questions to be addressed as an agenda item, either here or at Fair Practices, a commission meeting in September if possible, so that we can clarify for the residents of Laguna Vista the process of compliance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're going to stop the items not on the agenda, comments on not on the agenda, to get to our 6 o'clock time certain items, which are public hearing items. So I'm going to go to item number 27, and that is adoption of a resolution increasing dog license impound rates and fees for the city in conjunction with the services provided by the San Diego Humane Society with SPCA to provide animal control services for the city. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and ask the council members to disclose any constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff only.
Staff and some emails.
Staff only.
Email and met with staff.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence and our petitions?
We did receive a correspondence on this item, and it was forwarded to the council prior to this meeting.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and begin with a report from Ms. Vicky Gutierrez, our real estate manager.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers. Vicky Gutierrez, Real Estate Manager for the Public Works Department. I'm going to go ahead and discuss this item. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution increasing the dog license, increasing the dog license impound rates and fees for the city in conjunction with the services provided by the San Diego Humane Society and the SPCA to provide animal control The North County Humane Society began providing animal control services to the city in 1963, and after a merger in 2010, the San Diego Humane Society and the SPCA merged, beginning to provide services in its place. The Humane Society has demonstrated a competence and professional qualifications necessary to perform services for the city in a manner throughout all the city's existing animal services agreement. The increase to the dog license and impound rates last done was in September of 2002, and since that time, the cost to provide animal control services has drastically increased. The revenues associated with licenses and fees are used to offset and help offset, but don't fully cover the cost of providing humane and efficient regulating of the ownership, handling, treatment, and disposition of dogs, cats, and others. The city entered into an animal services agreement in June of 2020 for a five-year term, and that, this agreement's scheduled to expire in June 30th of 2025. The proposed rates are based on the increase in animal control costs in an alignment by the city, by the Humane Society, with fees for animal services throughout the county. So that would be all, all cities utilizing the, the San Diego Humane Society. The proposed rates on the following slide that I'm going to show you are the same rates to be charged in all cities under contract with the Humane Society, and the fees collected and provide some cost offset, offset for the provision of animal control services. And most of these, by other cities, have already been approved. The proposed rates will become effective on August 15th, 2023, and all revenue from the fees collected are retained by the Humane Society as part of our animal control agreement. So this shows you the schedule of the previous, the current rates that we have in effect, and the proposed rates that I'm proposing here tonight, and it'll show you the increases, which aren't, for each item, pretty much aren't very significant, but they are before you, and they are part of the staff report that was published. The estimated revenue to Humane Society for the Oceanside fiscal year 2023-24, that's proposed, is $2,344,444. So of that, $421,000 comes from the proposed fees, and $1,923,444 comes from our city contract compensation that we pay. The estimated expense of the Humane Society for Oceanside for fiscal year 23-24 is expected to be $4,081,484. Funding from direct fees and city compensation related to these only covers about 57% of the Humane Society expenses for Oceanside based on the city's contract services, contracted services. So the shortfall to the Humane Society based on these proposed rates and expenses is projected to be $1,737,040. The Humane Society, to fill that gap, the Humane Society utilizes dollars that are donated to them for the shortfall. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt this resolution increasing dog license impound rates and fees for the city in conjunction with the services provided by the San Diego Humane Society and SPCA to provide animal control service to the city. So that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. I will also say that I have a representative, Michael Lowry, from the San Diego Humane Society. He's their CFO, and he's also available to answer any questions that I may not be able to answer for you.
Thank you. Would, Mr. Lowry, would you like to make a comment at this point?
I don't have a comment at this, but certainly welcome to answer any questions that may be. You've covered everything pretty well.
All right, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, this is a time for the public to be able to comment on this very specific item. You do not have to have signed up to speak on this. Please approach the podium, provide your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak. Mr. Newton?
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, members of the council and the public, I'd like to share a story with you, and I'm concerned about, well, I'll get into what I'm concerned about in a minute. So I adopted a cat a few years ago, and I actually got it from the county facility in Carlsbad. And when I adopted this cat, I heard the story that he and his two sisters were abandoned by their previous owners that left them in an apartment as they vacated the apartment with a couple of bowls of food and water and an open window, and it took the maintenance staff three days to catch these animals and then take them to the, to the animal shelter there in Carlsbad. When I first heard that story, I was really angry, I thought that that was abuse of animals. And as I got to know my cat a little better, and I've had other cats in the past, it was clear that he was not an abused animal. It's clear that he was treated with love and that he loved people. And that kind of caused me to reframe that circumstance of what happened with the previous owners, and instead of thinking that they abused the animal, what I realized was there was a surrender fee of $60 per animal, which for these people that were in an apartment would be a $180 fee for three cats, and apparently they couldn't afford it, they did what they could, they left food and water, and they left the animals, they abandoned them in the apartment. And that's what brings me to comment tonight. I noticed that the word impound rates was on that report, and I'm not sure what the bureaucratic context of that is. If impound rates would include surrender fees, or, you know, the word impound would include surrenders of people that surrender animals. I realize that it takes money to run everything, and I realize that people would take advantage of the circumstance of, of surrendering, surrendering animals without a fee if they could, but I think there does need to be a provision in there for hardship if people need to surrender animals, that they can do so, and maybe that impound fee would be waived if an impound fee in fact does apply to that. If we don't, people will just abandon animals, and then will incur more costs to recover them and get them back in the shelter, so it might pay for itself, and hopefully people on an honor system would at least, you know, hopefully pay the fees needed to surrender their animals. All I got to say, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak public first before we get around to, to responding to the questions? Aaron? Morin?
Hi. Oh, hello. Aaron Morin at 12:41. Erin Warren at 1241 Shamborg Court. I have two cats, and I adopted them through, what was it? Anyways, but I adopted them through a secondhand nonprofit. And just to let you know, if it is correct that the abandonment fee is up, that's another cost to the owner. They're probably having a hard time letting go of that animal and wish that they had more money for the moving expenses, other things that can happen with somebody. But I think just if we could possibly surrender the animal with no fee, that would make more sense, because I agree with that other speaker's point, that there are homeless people, there's people that are just living paycheck to paycheck, and they might not be able to afford that animal anymore. Or I've seen documentaries where middle class is disappearing, but there's poverty, and if they had an animal to surrender, that's going to be another hardship. That's another thing that they have to come up with that kind of money to drop off that animal, and that's just more cost. And that's not what we want to do for them. We want to give them an option, an option to drop off the animal if they cannot afford it, or get through another nonprofit to see if they might have to find food for that animal, shelter, you know? It's just, it's a struggling time out there right now, and I think that's what we need to focus on first. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other requests to speak on this item? I see none, so I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and see if we can get some questions, either staff or Mr. Lowry, to respond to the questions that were raised. I'm going to pine to Mr. Lowry on that one. Okay. He's best to answer that.
Yeah, I can answer the question about the fees and relinquishment fees and all sorts of the different types of fees we have. One of the primary goals of our organization is the welfare of the animals, obviously. Last year, as an organization, we waived about a half a million dollars in fees organized organization-wide, primarily to either get an animal back into its home or to get an animal into a new home. The two examples that the commenters had was about on relinquishing an animal, and in that case, we would obviously work with those individuals. It's critical for us when we're in taking an animal to know as much as we can about them. So we'd much rather have firsthand information from the current owner, and if being able to get that information entails waiving relinquishment fees so that we're dealing with that owner and not dealing with someone who's either bringing in a stray or claiming that it's a stray, we're going to work with that individual. Our, both our adoption counselors, our admission counselors are all trained to deal with people on a one-on-one basis and remove whatever barriers there might be to handle whatever their issue is, either reclaiming their animal or our adoption counselors getting animals out. And if finances are one of the barriers that they're dealing with, they're trained to use their best judgment and do waiving or discounting the fees as necessary to have the best outcome for that animal. We also work with individuals. We have a pet pantry, which provides free food and supplies to the folks that want to keep their animal but can't afford it. So we don't let fees become a barrier for whatever it is that we're trying to deal with the public on, and the evidence of that is the half a million dollars in fees that we waived last year to be able to accommodate that.
So it's already being done, and obviously, if someone can't pay, well, they're, you know, it's part of what you absorb.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I did have one question. There was a story that just came out about 300 rabbits, guinea pigs, and rats, I think, being transported from San Diego Humane Society to Arizona Humane Society because of overcrowding and wanting to try to have a better situation for animals to be adopted out, and that you are about, at about 150% capacity possibly because during pandemic, there weren't as many, as many, as much neutering going on. So are you able to fulfill this contract even though you are at this higher capacity? Do you expect it to be a limited time?
Yeah, I think this unusual transport is a good example of our ability to meet the contractual obligations by not only dealing with our own facilities, but being able to reach out to our network of other shelters. It's very unusual for San Diego Humane Society to be the one to transport animals out. Typically, we're the ones bringing them in, especially when there's natural disasters and other things that are affecting other shelters nationwide. Most of the time, we're the ones bringing them in, but this was a unique situation where we were able to make contact with another shelter that actually had a shortage of small animals and small pets and had a need, had demand of those in their community. So it was a great opportunity for us to take these animals that had been with us for quite some time and be able to get them into a community that has the demand to take them into home.
Good. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. We're going to go now to the council, Councilmember Joyce, for a potential motion.
Good evening. I just have a couple of questions. So did you say that all the other cities have already adopted the fee schedule that we've been presented with tonight?
Correct.
Okay. And what, is there anything special that has caused the cost of doing this business to go up, or is it simply the cost of general staffing?
Yeah, we're at the mercy of the factors that all other organizations are dealing with. About 70% of our expenses are staff-related, so as staffing costs have gone up, that's impacted us a great deal. So it's nothing, it's not something unique to our industry, but just the fact that we live in the economy that's dealing with those same factors.
We haven't seen a need for increased enforcement or increased patrol or anything like that?
No. As an organization, we have had a significant increase in the number of animals in our care, but that's really mainly driven by the staffing that it takes to do that work.
Was there a conversation about increasing the fees and how that could impact compliance generally? So somebody may not think that a fee could be waived, and so they make the decision at home to leave the animals home. They don't come in and even have the conversation. So is there, was there a conversation about that impact of not raising the fees versus how much it costs to do the backend work and the suffering that the animals might experience based on noncompliance?
Yeah, I mean, specifically on the relinquishment fees, that is something, as an organization, we do talk about quite a bit, because we do see instances where if somebody feels that there isn't flexibility on that, and we've had instances where somebody comes in and claims that they're turning in a stray animal, and we can tell that it's actually their animal. You can see that bond. So we, our admissions counselors are trained to do their best to recognize that through their conversations, let the folks know that we can work with you if there's a financial aspect that's a barrier, because the information we can get from an actual owner that's voluntarily giving us information about that animal, what type of home is it going to be best in, we then can use that information to get that animal into the best home for it, whether kids or no kids or other animals. So specifically on relinquishing, yes, there have been discussions about whether or not to have no fee at all, but we still feel that there's benefit to having some fee for the folks that can pay, but using our judgment to waive when that is necessary for that individual.
Okay. So generally, I just have concerns about the overall structure and just any further harm that it could cause. So I appreciate your answers that were very complete. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and move adoption. Councilmember Weiss?
So the contract the city has with the Humane Society is specifically for animal control services. So the money that we pay doesn't go to transporting rabbits to Arizona?
No. The contract that we have with the City of Oceanside covers, as Vicky mentioned, about 57 to 60% of the actual cost that we've calculated at the process to provide those services. So there's certainly services that we provide above and beyond that would be required of the contract, especially when you get into extenuating medical care for some of those unusual cases where animals need more care than we might normally provide. So those sorts of things are covered on the philanthropic side of things, donors.
So those would be above the statutory requirement for holding a dog for a certain amount of time?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, and I'll second your motion. But the question I have, I was reading the staff report, and if I understand it, it's been since 2002 since any increases have happened?
That's correct.
My only concern with that is when we wait that long to make adjustments, and these aren't huge leaps, but it has that potential to make the increases really big at one time, and I would strongly encourage that we look at these more frequently, and smaller incremental increases, I think, are better for the public. If it's every five years, it had to go up a dollar, that's easier for people to absorb than maybe a $5 thing, which, again, it's not huge, but I think it just sets us up for that. So I would just encourage us to have talks about fee increases a little sooner. But that, I second it.
All right, so we have a motion in a second.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much. On to item number 28. This is adoption of a resolution of holding Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023-P05, approving a development plan D22-00010, regular coastal permit and density bonus to allow the demolition of two single-family homes and one triplex, and the construction of a three-story apartment complex consisting of 16 market-rate units and one very low-income affordable unit at 1931 to 1933 South Tremont Street, and it's called the Tremont. The applicant is JLHFXs Tremont LLC, and this is an appeal by Christine Anne Russell. I'd like to go ahead and call, open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff and the appellant?
None.
Staff, the appellant, and her emails. I should say I talked to her as well as received emails.
I received emails from the appellant, and I spoke with staff about the compatibility of the affordability of the new construction.
I did talk to staff, yes.
I have to correct myself. There was emails. I do remember that now, yeah.
All right, Mr. Navarro, as the city clerk, did you receive any correspondence and our petitions?
We received correspondence from the appellant, but no other correspondence outside of that.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to begin with testimony by Delaney Carmen, who is a planner for the City of Oceanside. Ms. Carmen?
Mayor Sanchez, if I may, for a moment. Sergio Madera, city planner. We had technical difficulties with the PowerPoint. Hard copies have been provided. At the council's pleasure, we could either go fix that technical difficulty or just run through it the way it is right now with the presentations in front of you.
Do you think you'd do it in five minutes?
Less than five minutes.
Less than five minutes. Let's go ahead and take a break. We can get started again.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Delaney Carmen with the Planning Division, and I'm here to present Agenda Item 28, Development Plan D2210. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the resolution upholding Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023-P05, approving development plan, regular coastal permit and density bonus, for the demolition of two single-family homes and a triplex, and the construction of a three-story, 17-unit apartment complex located in 1931 to 1933 South Tremont Street. The site is located in the South Oceanside Planning Area and the non-appellable jurisdiction of the local coastal program. The project's site is designated Coastal Residential High Density by the city's general plan and Medium Density Residential by the city's zoning ordinance. The site is bordered by a mix of single-family and multifamily residences in all directions. On March 13th, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the project, and after due consideration, adopted a resolution approving the project by a 6-1 vote. On April 3rd, the city clerk's office received an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision by Christine Anne Russell, accompanied by their required appeal fee. The proposed apartment project would include 16 market-rate units and one very low-income affordable unit. As designed, the three-story building would have apartments located on all three levels, with the ground level also containing covered and uncovered parking stalls as well as common open area and private storage spaces. The units would range in size from 470 square feet to 897 square feet in a variety of studio, one, and two-bedroom floor plans, with all private open space areas being provided in the form of patios or decks. The style of the proposed project embraces the coastal setting of South Oceanside with brightly colored plaster walls, natural ventilation and light through floor-to-ceiling windows, and a highlight of usable outdoor patios and lush landscaping. A cubist approach to varying the mass in open space creates outdoor terraces that dot the facade like a checkerboard, in addition to a wedding cake-style tiering that reduces the bulk and massing of the building. Common patio areas and an abundance of landscaping on the property frontage help to create a pedestrian-friendly social engagement with the neighborhood. Pursuant to Article 46 of the zoning ordinance, the city council may consider only the issues raised in the appeal filed with the city. The appellant's appeal letter outlined three issues. Number one, the appellant asserts that proposed project would impact and block safety access due to increased operations from visitors and delivery vehicles, and the street would have to be widened to accommodate emergency vehicles. In response, the project has been reviewed and approved for safety standards by the Fire Department and Traffic Engineering Division of the Public Works Department. The existing street as designed meets the requirements for the minimum width of a two-lane local street, and the proposed project would not create significant impacts that would hinder emergency access in the area. Number two, the appellant asserts that a coastal analysis of the streets should be performed before any more multifamily dwelling units are approved. In response, the appellant's request for preparation of a coastal analysis of the streets is vague and does not specifically indicate the type of analysis that should be performed prior to consideration of the proposed project. The project as proposed is compliant with the minimum off-street parking requirements for the R3 zone. It would not create a significant traffic impact. Based on the project's low-trip generation calculation, the proposed project does not trigger the threshold to warrant a traffic study. The project has also been found to be consistent with the local coastal program and relevant coastal act policies. Finally, the appellant asserts that proposed project would impede access to Americans with Disabilities Act ADA handicap personal vehicles. In response, there is no evidence in the project record that indicates the development would impede existing or proposed ADA access in the area. The project would provide 17 off-street parking spaces, including two ADA-accessible spaces, and is consistent with the parking requirements for the development of a proposed density in the R3 zone. The project would also close two curb cuts on South Tremont Street, which would create additional on-street public parking. Based on the information presented this evening and in the staff report, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution upholding Planning Commission Resolution Number 2023-P05, approving development plan, regular coastal permit, and density bonus for the demolition of two single-family homes and a triplex, and the construction of a three-story, 17-unit apartment complex located in 1931 to 1933 South Tremont Street. This concludes staff's presentation. Myself or the applicant will be available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and give the appellant the time to present. Do we have Christine Anne Russell?
Yes, we do, and to accommodate Mrs. Russell, she will be doing her testimony from.
From her seat?
From her seat.
All right, so Ms. Russell, what you have are 20 minutes. And you would be able to, she would be the one to be able to have time for rebuttal. So 20 minutes, and if you wish to, of the 20 minutes, you could reserve time for rebuttal. Ms. Russell, are you having problems with the mic?
Is it on?
Yes.
Test, test.
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Christine Russell. I used to live in the city of Carlsbad back in 2018. I was diagnosed with stage IV metastatic breast cancer. I was misdiagnosed by the Veterans Health Administration. I was living in a beautiful little granny flat over in the city of Carlsbad. I was living in a beautiful little granny flat over in the city of Carlsbad. Due to my deteriorating medical conditions and the situation with the owners, they wanted their granny flat back for personal use. I was forced to move for two reasons, due to my medical condition and they needed their granny flat back for personal use. So I, at that time, I was able to drive, and I had different physical abilities, and that brought me to the city of Oceanside. But I looked at over 300 properties over a period of six months, and I looked at ADA access, I looked at what was going on on the streets at night, I looked at what was going on on the streets during the daytime. I spent a lot of money researching to try to find another suitable place to live that could accommodate my medical needs. And that journey brought me to South Tremont Street. I reside at 1922 and 1/2 South Tremont Street, and I live in a vintage 1940s little beach The reason why I chose that street was because of access. A lot of folks come on that street. It's a very quiet street. They use it for video filming. There's been a lot of folks that have come down there and filmed it because of palm trees. It's a very quiet neighborhood. Back in 2019, when I moved to that location, then there was changes that happened due to things beyond our control, and the medical system was put at risk. So then decisions were made to stay at home, and then other decisions were made by the local city council to allow businesses to turn their parking lots into outdoor restaurant venues. The Coastal 101 is on the other side of that street, and then you have Vista Way, and significant change took place the last three years since I've been living there. You know, when you don't go anywhere and you live there 24/7, and you have people that leave for their jobs each day. And the theft and the crime rate went up on that street because of the problems with different folks starting to come to the area where they used to be able to use parking places there on the Coastal 101, where they used to be able to access areas to park and use. And what I found since I've lived there is I used to have to have my vehicle almost a half a mile or a mile away at times, and with me being restricted in mobility, I couldn't access my own safe vehicle. Now, I understand when you sign a lease and move into a place, there's no off-street parking. However, those units were there a long time ago, before the changes started taking place the last 20 years. You have a lot of homes that turned into vacation rentals and Airbnbs, and a lot of stuff I'm talking about, they talk about at the Planning Commission meetings, a lot of people give feedback. It's like watching the rerun over and over and over again. When you go back and watch all the videos from the Planning Commission meetings, people keep talking about safe access, but it becomes harmful and it endangers people's lives when they literally can't access a POV just because of the change that happened, because of parking lots being turned into permanent outdoor restaurants. So, you know, we have this thing called the preamble of the Constitution, and part of that preamble is promoting the general welfare. And I interpret that as, you know, also being things put in place to ensure that we can live safe wherever we're living, and now things have changed since the preamble was established for the Constitution, and now you have home care and medical care not being the same. So you really have to have access to your safe vehicles. So it has had a dramatic safety impact. As far as legal ramification, like on the City of Oceanside letter that was mailed out regarding the Planning Commission public hearing, it references Article 9, Section 15332, infill development projects, Class 3 categorical exemption about environmental determination. And when you look that up, that article, 19, Section 15332, Class 3 categorical exemption, and you read about it, when you play Dr. Google on the internet, it talks about approval of the project would not result in any significant effects. And it's talking about traffic, noise, air quality, water quality. But then it also talks about the project has no value, like not endangering rare or threatened species, but what about endangering people that become disabled? And I know there's these laws and there's these codes with the state of California, but it's kind of gotten out of control in the sense that one side's saying there's not enough housing availability, but then you got all these people living in the state of California, and really, the bottom line is the cost. So when I'm paying $1930, $1,930 a month for living in a place that's less than 400 square feet, and I love where I live dearly, it's like the perfect spot for someone that has the medical problems that I have. And it could happen to anybody living on that street, and that was part of my argument with, you know, if you call 911 and within 15 minutes, you got 12, or 13, or 15, or 16 families calling 911 within 15 minutes. You can't fit 15 fire trucks on that street. And it's just about numbers. It's a number game. But it's like you have this preamble about promoting the general welfare of the public from the Constitution, but then yet you've got these laws that are being passed that don't promote the general welfare of the folks already living on that street. And so then you really do endanger the safety of the street. And at the Planning Commission meeting, John Malik, he's a new planning commissioner, he voted against the project, and he cited the last time a real analysis was done was back in 2015 regarding the problems that happened on different coastal zone streets. Then you've got the NCTD paralift buses that cannot pull up along the side of the road because of the sardine effect with all the cars. And I understand this development is like going to have parking, but it's about what comes along. I mean, okay, so you want to have more access to housing, but it's what comes along with that development. And yes, you say you have enough parking for the tenants living in that unit, but that's not the reality of life. That's not the reality of what goes on on my South Tremont Street that I live on. You have a one-bedroom house, and you have 12 people living in that one-bedroom rental, and then you've got 10 cars that go along with that one-bedroom house, and this is real stuff. And then you have other folks, and then now you've got people that end up sick or disabled with their handicap placards, and they can't access their safe vehicles that they used to be able to access, because now when they have their helper come and drive them somewhere and they get back, they have to park the safe access vehicle a mile away. And so this is not promoting the general welfare of the neighbors and the residents that already live on that street. I do understand increasing access to housing and availability, but the problem is what comes along with that. And this stems from over 20 years ago, when changes started happening in the city of Oceanside, and what happens in that area since 2015. And so I agreed with what Planning Commissioner John Malik had stated during that Planning Commission meeting, is no safety analysis hasn't been done in the way it should be done. And I personally don't know how they do safety analysis, but I did serve as a safety officer in the military. I'd served as an environmental officer in the military. And what's been going on in the community for over 25 years is not in the best interest of the safety or promoting the general welfare, especially when you become sick and disabled, and you ride an NCTD lift bus like I do now, and the NCT lift bus cannot access the side of the street in a safe manner so I can access and get on the lift. That's the bottom line. And you could end up with 16, 20, 30 other families living on that street dealing with the same thing. And no, the way it's designed does not accommodate stuff like that. And that's where I'm coming from, is yeah, one fire truck, okay, but if a mass emergency happens, no, you can't fit 16 fire trucks on that street and try to maneuver around the sardines of cars, and it's already sardine-packed. And I mean, I'm just reiterating the reruns of the Planning Commission meetings of the entire city of Oceanside, when everyone comes in and gives their testimony about the problems with cars, but when it starts harming your life and you can't access something that's not promoting the general welfare, and that's not promoting our Constitution. And I just, I wish I had more facts to present, but my condition has gotten drastically worse. I appreciate Darlene calling me when I was inpatient at Scripps Mercy Hospital, but I literally can no longer walk. I can hobble. So I have real serious condition going on. I wasn't able to get out and bring in my whole neighborhood. Most of my neighborhood has always gone working, but it's just what I've gone through in my life, what I've seen when it comes to safety, and what's in place is not safe.
Thank you very much. You have 7 minutes 24 seconds left for rebuttal, should you wish to do that. At this time, we'd like to call on the applicant for them to testify if they so wish to, and this is J L H F X S Tremont LLC, or their representative. Is someone here? If you could please state your name, and you have up to 20 minutes.
I'm Scott Moss. I'm the architect with Field and Studio. I'm representing the applicant tonight.
Okay.
Don't have a presentation, per se. I rely on Delaney's presentation, and we're fine with that. Just available to answer any questions you guys might have.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Russell, that was, you have an opportunity to speak now for the remainder, if you wish to, and that was seven...
7:24.
7 minutes 24 seconds. Did you wish to say anything else?
Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, right. You know what? Let me ask about public input before we allow you to do your rebuttal, because I would like for you to hear if there's anyone else that wishes to speak on this item before you take advantage of your rebuttal, all right? This is a public hearing. This is a time for the public to come forward and speak on this item for up to three minutes. You did not have to sign a slip or check in before to be able to speak. Looks like we do have one person who did, Mr. Richard Newton, but you did not have to, so I don't see him in the council chambers.
I believe he's outside talking to...
But if anybody else wishes to speak, please rise, approach the podium, and you can please state your name and then speak for up to three minutes. And Mr. Newton, you could be afterwards, all right?
Good evening, council and honorable mayor, Shelley Parker Ranch...
Thank you.
...and Louie Ray. I just have a question. The houses that are going to be demolished, did the city come in with eminent domain? Are they abandoned houses? Were the people, was it bought out and people moved? So I just wanted to know what precipitated the destruction and rebuilding of this area? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Newton, you have up to three minutes.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, members of the council, and the public. I was going to comment on affordable housing issues, but I have come to understand that this is a little bit different, the circumstances here, but I would like to just take a moment to suggest that the city consider somebody's handicap perhaps having a reserved parking spot on the street, if that would help them in some way, if that's possible to do that. Maybe that's the remedy for the circumstance, and everybody would win. The developer gets their new development, there's progress, things moving forward, and these needs are addressed as well. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? I see no one else. So I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing, and that is the public comment part. And so, Ms. Russell, if you'd like to go ahead and speak, for rebuttal, you have up to 7 minutes 24 seconds. Oh, we have the timer for you.
Oh, okay.
We'll let you know when you're done.
Okay, thanks. All right, I'll address your question. There was, to my knowledge, there was a family that lived on the property, and they were related, and that lived in those two homes. The family, they were related to each other. One of the gentlemen was a contractor, I believe, and they built also the back home. And so everybody that lived on those two properties were all related to each other. They were all family. So the bottom line is they, at some point, the properties were sold, and both families moved out. The family that lived in one house and the back rental, but over 20 years ago, they were all related to each other. And then the gentleman that I guess was a contractor built the back unit, and they were all related. Everybody was like one big giant family. It was actually, in my mind, that's a beautiful thing, to have like extended family, and auntie, and cousin, and grandma, and everybody living next to each other. That's like the American dream. And then things change in families and lives, and they sold the property, and they both, everybody left, and I cried. So that's what happened there. You're welcome. And as far as ADA, on the other side in the alley, the alley, and I informed the city about this, that the alley would become a street, and the alley is not a street. There's a big development, and there's already traffic jams. And again, my concern in the alley is ADA access now for people that move into that cement, the three- or four-story cement block that's going up. I don't know, that's going to be a nightmare with NCTD lift access. I hear it every day now when I'm riding the NCTD lift about their abilities to access the passengers on different streets in the coastal zone, and different streets in other parts of the city of Oceanside. And then also, just daily operations on the street. I've become really well-known with the postal office, the mailman there, and just what's gone on the last 20 years on the street with postal situations, and it's just not safe anymore in certain coastal streets in the neighborhood. And part of that is the problem with the development. But then you go back to the thing that they're claiming, that the exemption because of Article 19, Section 15332 supposedly meets this environmental exemption, but when the environment becomes a safety hazard, that's my concern, and I've lived it, and I'm stuck now. I personally cannot move just because of the inflation and what's happened in the housing market, and I cannot live in multi-dwelling infrastructures because of my chemical sensitivity disability. But, you know, that's not what housing developers look at. But, you know, that's not what housing developers look at. They're looking at more, more housing, but then they're not really thinking about how it's going to impact the families that are living in those individual units, and then the safeness of how it's going to impact the street. Because the reality is, most times, two parking spots or even one parking spot is not enough for the reality of what actually ends up living in your beautiful three-story, multi-dwelling infrastructure that you built. The area just was never designed for that from an engineering perspective, and it's just really sad. And yes, you could create handicap parking spaces in the coastal zones along the streets, because there's several other folks that are handicapped that live on my street. Couple of my neighbors are also cancer thrivers, and they have to park on that street as well. But it is a safety issue now. I've lived it, and it's become a nightmare with ADA access. And that's just the bottom line. So, yeah, the planning commission says it meets this exemption, but the reality is it doesn't. And that's why your planning commissioner that joined the planning commission team, John Malik, that's why he voted against it, and that's why he was arguing a real analysis pertaining to safety. There's just a lot of problems now, post-pandemic, that never returned back to normal. And you have parking lots that never returned back to normal. There are permanent outdoor restaurants, and all that has had an impact on that little Hollywood street that's used for video films. Everyone comes and films on that street. Thank you so much for your time and listening to me. I'm sorry that I don't have a more formal presentation, but I just wanted to reference rights that are, we're supposed to have according to the U.S. Constitution, and then the problem with that categorical exemption.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So we'll go back to staff before going to the council. Anything else you wish to add?
Madam Mayor-
Okay.
-council members, we don't have anything to add, but we're here to answer any questions that the council may have.
All right. Great. Thank you. So to the council, I did, I did have a question, though. From the rendering, I couldn't tell, the access by car, is that via the alleyway or on Tremont? Because I was, because Ms. Russell said something about the alley, and it's not a wide enough to be considered a street. So is, is it basically access from the alleyway?
Right. So the project is accessed, all the parking is through the alley. There are currently two curb cuts on South Tremont Street, but those are proposed to be closed as a part of the project.
Okay. And with respect-
If I may add, Madam Mayor, by closing those two curb cuts, we actually add two on-street parking spaces. So the project does provide enough code-compliant parking for the project itself, and it does add two additional parking spaces on Tremont Street by the fact that they're closing two curb cuts.
So, so two parking spaces are added. Would one of them be able to be handicapped?
Madam Mayor, I can't answer that question. I'm not, I don't know enough about ADA-
Okay.
-but we can certainly have our ADA expert in Engineering Division look into that possibility.
And is that parking on Tremont Street, or is that on the alleyway?
The project parking is accessed on the alleyway.
Alley. But when they closed it, you're really talking about Tremont Street having two additional. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the ADA Lyft does have access to the street, though, right? There was a, I heard, I thought I heard Ms. Russell say that, that the ADA Lyft, she was concerned about access to the street.
So I believe Ms. Russell is referring to NCTD's service for folks that, with disabilities, and I believe that, yes, they would be accessing anyone. I think they, I don't know this for certain, but my understanding is that they go to someone's home when they need a ride somewhere, similar to a car ride service, and they would be accessing those units from Tremont Street, not the alley.
Right. Okay. Because that was one of her concerns. Councilmember Weiss.
So for, to staff, so this is a density bonus project?
Correct, Councilmember Weiss.
So our discretion is, again, somewhat restricted. But because they're doing very low income, they're not even doing 10%. I think it's 6%. So they would be required then to pay the prorated fee for the balance, whatever our fee may be at the time they pull building permits. Is that correct?
That's accurate.
Thank you.
Councilmember Joyce.
I just had a couple of questions about the current situation. Do we know, do we have the actual size of the current studio that's being demolished to make room for the new product? I apologize for not getting this question in advance.
So I don't have that information directly. We can get it from the applicant. I do know that the total square footage of the triplex that's being demolished is 1,455 square feet.
Does the applicant have that information on hand?
I don't have the precise square footage, but I know that it's a smaller unit than what we're proposing. The proposed units are bigger than the smaller, the existing units.
It's a smaller unit than the 470 square feet units?
Yeah. A very small studio. The affordable one.
The one that's currently in place. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I asked that question because there are restrictions on demolishing an affordable unit and what we can do afterwards, and there are certain protections for the folks that live in there, so they have right to first refusal, in case people aren't aware. And they have some protections under state law. So right now, residing at the residence, there are two two-bedrooms. One of the two bedrooms pays 2,100, and that's considered under the county, that would be an affordable rent under low-income rents. Sorry. It is. I'm not asking, sorry. The, unless somebody wants to correct me. The other two-bedroom that's currently on the property that's being demolished is rented at the rate of 1,600. That is certainly under what would be considered affordable housing rent. It is not designated an affordable housing unit, so it doesn't, those tenants don't get the same protections as the ones that are occupying the studio at the current. And so I just want to take a second to, to like bring some attention to this situation. We have six people that are accessing affordable housing at the moment, and they are being displaced for the new units. The new units, with the exception of the one studio at 470 feet, are going to be rented at market rate. And so this is the displacement that's happening in our city right now, all over the city. And it's a, it's a situation that without our city taking a stance on policies that protect renters to being evicted through no fault of their own, they're going to continue to be displaced out of housing that is otherwise affordable, even if it's not under the umbrella protections of the state as, quote, "affordable housing." So I really would like to urge my colleagues to take this up at a future date. I was hoping that this would be part of our housing workshop that's coming up at the end of the month, because it is a lived experience that many, many citizens around Oceanside are experiencing right now. It's not going to be, because we're focusing in on producing affordable housing. But again, I ask my colleagues to consider this as a, as a serious need for people who currently reside in our city, as housing, as land prices go up, and more people look to redevelop the properties that people are using right now as rentals. With that, I understand that the appeal doesn't, I don't, I don't see that we have standing to, to deny the, the current project, but it's unfortunate, because I think we should be doing better by the people who are renting there right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Joyce. I, I did have another question, and that is, this is a bonus density project, and they are doing one, and then 16 are going to be market rate, so total 17. And as Councilmember Weiss mentioned, it's, it's a lower amount that he has to, because they're, they're doing very, very low. But it's only a studio, so I would really like to see it at least the one bedroom. So this is, this would make it actually more fair. I mean, we're, we're doing this huge project, you know, in, in, in terms of the rest of the neighborhood, there's no three-story. I looked around, they're mostly two-story. And in addition to what Councilmember said, would you change it to the one bedroom, please? Because, I mean, that, you're getting all of this bonus, including not having to do covered parking, but you're only giving the one, but the smallest space, a studio. Can you do the one as a one bedroom?
I can't really speak for the applicant towards that issue completely. I do know that the project is potentially not feasible, even in its current state, given interest rates and construction costs and everything else that's going on.
Well, this is the whole, this is what you're doing. You're doing studios, one bedroom, and I think a couple of, maybe just very small two-bedroom. I'm not, so it's, you're actually building the whole thing. Can you designate one of the one-bedrooms as the affordable, affordable unit? And I believe you are representing-
Yes, I am. I just can't speak to the, the financial analysis that, what that looks like to the pro forma to say, we're taking away that income from the one-bedroom and making that affordable. And the, the other thing is that the replacement housing requires us to meet the existing affordable unit, which is a studio. And so we, we also chose it for that reason, though it is matching the existing affordability.
Well, it's a one studio, and then there's other bedrooms, and then there's the other units.
But the other units, the other two-bedroom units are, the income level is not the affordable level, and that's what the housing group based that on for replacement housing.
Councilmember Joyce.
I'd just say that this is, again, another piece that we can look at at the end of the month, where this conversation ends at us not knowing what it means to lose money from a studio to a one-bedroom. And I would really like us to develop a policy that, that has our development community say, hey, you know, we're going to miss out on this much money. If you can give us the 10 grand, yeah, you can make that an affordable unit. I would love for us to have that partnership with development community, so that we are getting housing for the people that live here, and, and, and they're getting to, to do their thing as well, instead of feeling like we have no options because we don't have enough information.
Mr. Mellon, could we require that we do one, the one-bedroom, one of the one-bedrooms as the affordable unit?
Let me read to you what the City Code section says on inclusionary units. So the design and exterior appearance of the reserved unit shall be reasonably consistent or compatible with the design of the total project development in terms of exterior appearance, materials, finished quality. Interior finishes and amenities may differ from those provided in the non-reserved units within the development, but neither the workmanship nor the products may be of substandard or inferior quality as determined by the city. The unit mix based on bedroom count provided for reserved units shall be a general mix in response to the affordable housing demand priorities of the city, and shall be set forth in the affordable housing agreement. So-
So we could require-
There's flexibility in the terms of the developer, I mean, the purpose of that section was to make it more flexible for the development community to have something that's not exactly like the market rate units. Because before, before that amendment, it was required that the affordable unit be proportional. And I think the intent of that section from the prior council was to enable the development community to be able to build the affordable unit slightly different than the market rate unit. So I think this is, project would be consistent with that standard.
Could we require the one-bedroom, and, and basically that would be, you know, slightly different inside?
I mean, that issue's never been tested under our City Code, so it's an uncertain result, I think.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Joyce.
I would just offer that 5% of this project is what they're trying to meet, and most of the units are one-bedroom and two-bedroom.
Yeah.
10 out of the 17 are one-to-two-bedroom units. So 5% of the overall project, I think a more accurate read would be for it to be a one-bedroom.
So I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution, except that the reserved affordable unit be a one of the, a one-bedroom.
I'll second the motion.
All right. Deputy Mayor Keim?
Just, since this is a density bonus, and this is a fairly complicated question, so I don't know if I have an answer. Since it does fall under density bonus and it triggers that, with the case precedent with Schreiber in Bankers Hill, where it falls upon the city on the onus to prove that's not a being a detriment, and when he's already saying the pro forma, do you think that would make, by them, by us adding an extra condition, by making a one-bedroom instead of a studio, would that be on the onus to say that's not going to be any kind of economic disadvantage to him? I just, and I know this is convoluted density bonus law, which unfortunately I've had to get comfortable-
That question to me, Deputy Mayor.
It's a question to anybody. I just, and this is my challenge with density bonus, and I'll be honest, I think for any, for to get waivers and get one dense, get one affordable unit for 17 units, and to get, you know, unlimited waivers, almost is frustrating, but I just want to know what we legally have the ability to address and enforce that.
So I read to you what our City Code section says. It's fairly vague, but it was designed to allow the affordable unit to be smaller than the market rate unit. That was the impetus behind it. Having said that, I mean, one option you might have is to deny the appeal, approve the project as is, but have the affordable housing regulatory agreement returned to you, and we could work with the developer in the meantime, and if he can establish that it's economically infeasible to have that as a one-bedroom unit, we could bring that issue to you then, and have the agreement approved by council. Because right now, we don't have the economics. I don't have a record to know whether or not it's feasible or infeasible. There's really no evidence on that topic.
Is it, is it, does density bonus-
One out of 17. Right.
Well, I don't know of any evidence in the record that I've heard on the issue of feasibility.
But does density bonus law, state law, will that supersede our City Code? And if our City Code makes it more onerous, and I, I mean, I just want to see where, I'm trying to also figure out, as we have projects going forward, where the discretion is for us to add these things. But from everything I've seen, and I know density bonus law is still getting narrowed down with press, with, with case law, there hasn't been that much, but it's going to be important in projects going forward, where we really can push and where we can't. I just, do you think density bonus law will make the onus on us to prove that it's not an economic disadvantage?
I think if we were denying a waiver or concession, or denying a density bonus, the onus would be on us to prove that. I don't know of the, any law right now. I think the affordable unit needs to be generally proportional to the market rate unit, but I, I'm not aware of any cases on that specific topic, which is why I suggested maybe we could sort of punt this issue to the affordable housing agreement and bring it back to you once we've had a chance to work with the applicant to determine whether it's feasible or not. But that's just one option, so.
I would actually like to see the studio and one of the one-bedroom units be designated as the affordable units. But to that, our code does have a provision in where the city has the ability, as if requested by the developer, to provide financial assistance. So if they set aside one of the one-bedrooms in the studio, and there's a financial gap, we have the ability to make up that gap. So I would recommend to the developer that, as you look at, coming back with the regulatory agreement, look at, look at that, and if you can make a one-bedroom and the studio as affordable, tell us what the gap is, and we have an opportunity to, to pay the difference or let you sit with the studio.
Thank you. I was going to comment a little differently, but after listening to Councilmember Weiss, I appreciate that insight, and I could support something like that, but just to kind of do a little bait and switch on the end, on the developer, the way it's currently, the motion's currently made, I don't know that I could support that.
Well, let's, let's do the motion, and then if there's an alternate, alternate motion afterwards, we can do that. So- So there's a motion and a second on it. Please vote.
Motion fails, 2 to 3. Keim Robinson Weiss, no.
Okay, so it failed. So Councilmember Weiss.
So I will move approval of staff recommendation, but I'd like to add a condition that reads something along the line of the developer shall evaluate providing one of the one-bedroom units and the studio as a designated affordable units and has the opportunity to request city financial assistance as provided in city code.
Well, I'll go ahead and second that. But, I mean, what I'd like to say is that I prefer that we have the one-bedroom versus, you know, if, if there's not going to be no net cost to the city. I mean, the city is already providing added traffic and added, which, which was a concern for, of the appellant, her concern as a veteran and as a handicap person, that there's a lot more traffic activity going on, and so she's concerned about her safety. So there is that, right, that, that's happening. We should at least, and this whole thing is about providing affordable units. One, one affordable unit. So I would like to make that one affordable unit at the, at, at the, at the cost of the developer to be the one-bedroom, because the city's already providing all the other, all the other impacts. Councilmember Joyce.
Just briefly, and to not go back in circles too much, what I brought up was that I don't think it's in compliance with density bonus, like on the original charge, not with our city code. Our city code would allow to make a smaller studio, a slightly smaller studio, a slightly different studio, but not in fact change a one-bedroom to a studio, because that's a different switch. So as it stands, I'll support the motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you, Ms. Russell, for coming to the council meeting. Thank you. All right, next, we're going to go back to the communications from the public regarding items not on this agenda. Item number 30, I believe we were at Sandy Beal. Where's Sandy Beal? Yes.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and City Council members. My name is Sandy Beal, and I'm from Rancho San Luis Rey Mobile Home Park, where I'm the City of Oceanside Park representative and also the homeowners' president. I attended the July Housing Commission meeting, and I'm very pleased to hear, and I was very pleased to hear that they're advocating for the mobile home community. Leilani Hines stated at that meeting that the Manufactured Home Fair Practices Commission's only function is to approve the yearly permissive rent increase, and in my opinion, that needs to be changed. The mobile home community needs a forum to be able to voice our issues and concerns. It is now 2023, not 1982, when Oceanside's Manufactured Home Fair Practices Act limiting increases in rent came into effect. Now mobile home parks are being taken over by millionaires with only one thought in mind, making more money. Maybe in 1982, mobile homeowners were safe from predatory park owners, but sadly, in 2023, that's not the case. The Manufactured Home Fair Practices Commission is supposed to be a neutral party between the park owners and the homeowners. It has never felt neutral to me. Mobile home community is mostly seniors, veterans, and disabled people who love living here and rent control, and, and rent control is the only way that they're able to. I'm beyond, I'm beyond excited that the Housing Commission cares enough to make the mobile home community a priority. Please remember, the mobile homeowners of Oceanside deserve a voice, and we promise to keep fighting until we get one. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Parker, followed by Richard Newton.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and City Council. I'm, I'm Shelley Parker. I'm from Rancho San Luis Rey, and I'm actually here tonight to add my voice to Laguna Vista. What Sandy said is a correct statement. I'm sorry Leilani Hines is not here tonight, because she did equivocably state that that was their only mission for the Manufactured Fair Practices Commission. But the City of Oceanside is the LEA, which is the local enforcement agency, and apparently Leilani Hines does not want to take that role. We have a code enforcer for, that is supposed to be for our mobile home community, but she cannot take that because she has been not directed to do it. It does appear as, as though Ms. Hines has issued something to the owner of Laguna Vista, but it took two months to do it. And it, the onus was on the people who live in the park. And the reality of life is, is that we're not being paid for this. They're not being paid for this. We should be able to, once that, that, the office should know, the housing should know that if they don't pass, there should be a letter that goes out to all of the, the residents as well as the owner, saying he is in violation if he collects rent. Now, I get there was a timing issue in July, but there certainly wasn't, was not in August when he went ahead and billed the rent increase anyway. So as the LEA, the City of Oceanside, somebody has to take that responsibility. And unfortunately, since the Manufactured Fair Practices is not meeting, and I cannot say that to them, I'm going to say it to you, although I've been advised that you guys can't do anything, but I'm still going to say it because it still needs to be said. We need to have protection, and that is what this agreement is. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Newton, followed by Shane Garst.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, members of the council and the public. I'd like to begin by thanking Eric Joyce for his housing conference or seminar that he had a few days ago in the library next door. It was insightful, and it brings to, to light that there will be some housing issues coming up in the near future. There's going to be a housing conference near the end of the month, and then obviously it'll be before the city council. So now's as good a time as any to start throwing out some input on those things. I'd like to start by pointing out that democracy is at the local level. It starts at the local level, and it does not mean electing a micromanaging dictator in Sacramento. It means the people having a say in their communities, their local communities and their lives, and that includes zoning. I know there are some state mandates that are being imposed upon us, and I think there are some ways that we can challenge that going forward I'd like to bring up. I'd also like to talk about the economics briefly of affordable housing. We know from economics that there are a couple of principles. One is that for every, there are two sides to any transaction. For any dollar received by one person, there's a dollar paid by somebody else. There's always at least two parties. If there's only one party, there's always opportunity costs, investments that are lost on one venue by pursuing another venue instead. Also, there's no free lunch that derives from that. And as a result of that, when we create housing, affordable housing, we are taking below-market rates and giving those to one person at the expense of another, and that is not right. Municipalities and governments should not interfere with market forces. It's not the role of government. I understand that housing is expensive. All you have to do is look at the 5 freeway going south every morning and see people who would like to live closer to the City of San Diego that live up here in North County, and they drive, they commute to work every day. Commutes are part of life. I did it for many years. I drove over 100 miles. I had an odd schedule, but I would drive over 100 miles each way to live here where I could afford to live. That's just something everybody needs to deal with. I would never dream of asking somebody else to subsidize my housing to live closer to my work. The other problem is because those costs for affordable housing are underwritten by other people, those other people tend to be the other homeowners and buyers of properties, and that has the opposite effect of what we're trying to do of driving up the market rates for everybody else. So all in all, I think increasing affordable housing levels, which we talked about before at this council, are a bad idea. I think we need to keep them at the minimal level. And then I think we need to join in with Huntington Beach and consider challenging the state mandates. Councilman Robinson, you had that excellent video on Oceanside Government. You pointed out that we are a charter city, and as such, we have to obey the state's constitution, but we can otherwise draw our own laws. That is also true of Huntington Beach that is challenging the state, and I would like to ask the city council to consider putting this on agenda and perhaps visiting that issue in the future, that maybe we could join in and file an amicus brief with Huntington Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane Garst, followed by Marja Abuboe.
Good evening, everybody. Shane Garst, local resident here, 20-plus years. My wife's lived here 40-plus years, and we just bought a rental down by the beach. And I just have a few questions, recommendations about the local coastal program and how we're connected to the California Coastal Program. This is my property where the arrow's pointing, private courtyard, the arrow's pointing to a little balcony. And according to the California Coastal Commission, certain activities may be exempt from permit requirements. I don't know if you all know, the regular coastal permit for Oceanside is about $50,000 and takes about a year. Some improvements to existing structures that do not pose an environmental risk and are not located in, in or adjacent areas with certain sensitive coastal resources or between the shore and the first public road are exempt from the California Coastal Commission. And in our local coastal program handbook, which is 436 pages, a few items here, the need for close coordination between your staff and the coastal commission staff. The point I want to stress is the need for increased coordination between local government and commission staff when permit jurisdiction arise in certain geographical areas in the coastal zone. Coastal permit applications and appeals, this is all in our local coastal program and also the handbook. And I just feel like there's not a good resource for the local coastal program in Oceanside to discuss any of these opportunities with. And I'm required a coastal permit, but you see that empty lot next to me? There's no coastal permit for that 5,000-square-foot structure, which I feel is a much bigger need than my balcony in the private courtyard, which is not viewable from, that's South Pacific, there's a seawall. The only people that could see that is my neighbors look over the fence. I've gone to the coastal commission and discussed that with them, because certain people at the city, I've heard lots of different avenues. Certain people at our city said if I could discuss with the California Coastal Commission and get an exemption, that would be okay. I went to the California Coastal Commission, started getting an exemption, paid the fees and all these, and then it's just been, no coordination with our city, I feel like. So any questions or recommendations to help me with this?
Mr. Borrego, do you have any suggestions at all?
Yeah, Honorable Mayor and City Council members, yes, we are very familiar with Mr. Garst's situation.
Okay.
We've had conversations with the California Coastal Commission regarding this matter, as well as several conversations with Mr. Garst as well. I would just continue to have him work through our staff on this issue, and I really can't give any advice beyond that.
Right.
But we, we have looked at various avenues here, but we are bound by the, the rules that are in place today.
Right. All right, so you're already in conversations. Thank you very much, sir. Marja Abuboe.
It's Marjan with an N. I just, I just wrote that. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, honorable council members. My name is Marjan Abuboe with Lozo Jury. We represent SAFER, the Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, and its members that live and work in and around Oceanside. SAFER would like to speak about the Ordway Industrial Project and its environmental impacts that were not considered by the city. As a preliminary matter, I brought physical copies of the appeal and written comments and the returned appeal fee that I want to provide to the clerk, so thank you, and submit it into the record. I want to start by requesting that the city council accept SAFER's appeal of the planning commission's decision approving the Ordway project under CEQA's categorical exemption. Last Wednesday, SAFER sent its appeal and fee to the city via FedEx's overnight mail, and we simultaneously emailed the city a copy of our appeal, letting the clerk know that both an original copy and a fee were being sent overnight. Unfortunately, the city provided no response until it denied our appeal on Friday because it was not received on Thursday. Clearly, there was some error on FedEx's part, but fortunately, this did not cause any prejudice since the city had already made an email, or already received an email copy of our appeal. As such, we request the city to accept our appeal and schedule a hearing so that the issues raised by Oceanside residents from the impacts of building a new warehouse next to a residential neighborhood can be heard. For background, the city cannot invoke a Class 32 exemption when a project will have significant impacts on air quality and noise. With the remaining time I have, I will briefly explain why we, along with expert reports, conclude that significant impact from the project necessitates further CEQA review and mitigation. So first, the project increases the cancer risk by nearly five times the significance threshold of 10 per million. Our expert consultants determined that this is due to diesel particulate emissions from the construction equipment and trucks, which will create a significant impact on the health of neighbors living just across the street from the project. Second, noise from warehouse operations will exceed noise limits for residential receptors located across the street. Acoustical experts found that the noise generated during the many, many months of construction will exceed both residential and industrial limits included within the city's noise ordinance. Given how CEQA does not include an exception for impacts that are not permanent, city cannot rely merely justify the impacts as being temporary. In short, the project will clearly lead to significant air quality and noise impacts, and so the city violated CEQA by allowing the project to proceed under an infill exemption. So we respectfully request the city to accept our appeal and consider these critical issues. Thank you.
And so now we're, we're on a general council member comments. Any comments after being off for a month? Councilmember Robinson.
Glad to be back. I just wanted to talk about a couple of quick things to let people know, some events that happened in July, the end of July. I went to a, like I was mayor, was there also for the month for point Marines, it was in the vet house out at the Veterans Center, and I just.
Somebody there, no. I'll get this right. I'll figure it out someday. Short of what I just said was, went to an event at the Veterans Center here in town for the Montford Point Marines. And if you're not aware of this group of individuals and what they've done in our history for the Marines, this is the first African-Americans that were allowed into the United States Marine Corps during World War II, and a great group of individuals here in the city that keep these individuals, their memories alive, and the work they did, and the families were there. So it was very, very moving to be there. I want to compliment our PD for the National Night Out event that they held. It was a great event, and I was there for a couple hours, and just a lot of fun, and I was just truly impressed by the turnout of the folks that came and the time that I was there. And finally, I promised these individuals, I'd give them a little shout-out for Coastline Baptist Church that on Sunday celebrated their 25th anniversary. Coastline Baptist Church, if you're not familiar where they're at, maybe you knew where the old grandma's restaurant was off of El Camino Real, and that, they kind of took that whole complex over, and it's just beautiful what they did there. So I want to thank Coastline for inviting me out to speak at one of their services. Other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Joyce.
Just because it was brought up earlier by Mr. Newton, I did hold a housing forum in anticipation of the upcoming. in anticipation of the upcoming housing workshop that we have at the end of the month. It was attended by over 50 individuals. It was really great conversation around production of housing and what it looks like and our, our goals for housing in the city. And I think we're going to have a highly attended workshop at the end of the month. So I look forward to a robust conversation.
Thank you. And yes, I did attend the Montford Point Marines dinner and scholarship fundraiser. In fact, it's their first annual, they want, they're going to be doing it every year. It was at the VANCE, Veterans Association of North County. And what I didn't realize was I actually grew up with a couple of the families in the east side. So I did not know that I was, you know, had grown up with some real heroes. So it was really, really exciting to be able to see there was an actual awarding of the congressional, what was it, Medal of Honor?
Congressional Gold Medal.
Gold Medal, yeah. So it was a facsimile, right? Because the original one was given to the, to, to the act, the whole unit. But there were a few that had not actually received something. So two of the families received them, and it was, it was really wonderful. Another thing that happened during the break was something pretty cool for the City of Oceanside. We had been contacted by a Disney crew. Yes, a Disney crew. It's Haley's on it. If you all have, have, have seen the cartoon, Haley is actually a sophomore at Oceanside High and shows Oceanside High in such a positive light. So, so Haley ends up having all these really cool adventures around Oceanside. So I was reached out to by the executive producer, and they reached out because they wanted to do a tour. And they weren't able to do it before, you know, they wanted to do it before, but COVID struck, so they weren't able to do that. And so they want to do it now. They're hoping for the green light for a second season, but they're still doing some of the final shows for Haley's, Haley's on it. So it's about a sophomore in high school who ends up having all these adventures. The crew of 34 people came to Oceanside. I want to thank our city staff, city manager Borrego, Jonathan, and also Michelle Geller, executive, excuse me, economic director for the City of Oceanside, as well as the Flying Pig and Visit Oceanside and Main Street Oceanside, because we, we shuttled around people all over the downtown, and it was really, really nice to be able to show off our city to 34 people. So hopefully that, the word about Oceanside being this really cool, great place to, to be and to be able to grow up as Haley, who is again, a sophomore. The, the show is actually geared towards ages six to 11. Again, really cool to have been able to respond to that and say, yes, we want you here. So the final, one of the, some of the final episodes will be filming with the background of having been here. It's going to, it's actually going to go show sometime next summer. So when it is, I'm going to announce it. And so hopefully we'll have some, you know, you'll be able to recognize stuff from the tour.
You should have a screening.
I know, we should. Yeah. So anyway, thank you very much. The next regular scheduled meeting is Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023, at 3:30. And you've all been, already been invited to the workshop. That's going to be at 5:30 on August 31st, 5:30. So hopefully we all can be here. Excuse me? August 30th, sorry. August 30th, Wednesday, Wednesday, August 30th. So I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.